Sure. Okay. Town administrator Matt Wojcik, we have a reorganization on the agenda tonight, but first we'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM on May 21st, 2019. Will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First matter on the agenda is a matter of the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Town Manager, I would nominate Kevin to continue as chairman.
Second?
Nomination has been made in second, and are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Chairman, you are Mr. Chairman.
Why, thank you. So, there would be the matter of a vice chairman position. So, I will look for a nomination for vice chairman.
I will nominate David Cortez.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Just in leadership capacities, probably should lead by example and maybe take an appointment or two when the opportunity comes.
There are certain appointments I'd be interested in, but I don't want to take anything away from you. I know how much time you spend on some of them, Mr. Bonin, and I would feel bad.
Motion's been made in second, are there any other nominations? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Just like in Venezuela.
Who started and ended. I do not have any announcements. Is there anyone here for anything that is not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing as none, we will go directly into our first item, which is hearing for poll petition I'm not singing the poll petition. I'm very sorry, Mr. Hughes. You're welcome to do that if you'd like to. So, we would open up the hearing with a reading of the petition for joint or identical pole locations from Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc. They're requesting permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed there on together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public way or ways, which would be Cedar Street, P-0-50, and Pushbrace-0-589. National Grid requests the installation of one new joint-owned pole and pushbrace to support the existing pole line after a tree guy is removed from a dead tree at 73 Wallace Street. I don't have to keep going.
Good evening. I'm Michael Parant from National Grid, 245 South Main Street in Hopedale. I'm here about the new pole and pushbrace. So, the situation there is we have a tree guy, which is a practice we don't do anymore, and we are trying to clean him up as we find them, that we need to do that. This tree is old and dead, and customers looking to remove the tree. We weren't able to secure an easement on the property. If we were to replace the tree guy now, we would put another pole in its place with an anchor, and the customer who owns the property is not okay with that. So, our converse to that is to put a pole with a pushbrace on it to protect against that and a pole, a new pole, and it looks like a pole-to-pole guy on that to relieve the tension. So, it's the opposite. If we have a pole with a guy in the back holding it back, if we can't do that, then we would put a pushbrace, so it would just be like another pole at an angle against that pole for the opposite force on it. So, that's why we're here today.
Okay. And I see that it's been signed off on by the town engineer, conservation agent, police chief, he had no issues with it.
The neighbor was fine with the new approach?
It's not my job per se. I spoke to the engineer that was involved in it, and he said he hadn't heard anything, and if somebody, you know, if somebody had an issue, I would hope they'd be here tonight if they haven't contacted somebody by now.
Is there anyone here regarding the pole?
Yeah.
Excellent.
I think that's their property, 73 Wall Street, right?
That's his property.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Where the one across the street.
Oh, okay. Very good.
All right. And nobody has any issues with the pole and...
There's stakes out there showing where the poles are going, and that's fine.
Makes it simple.
Right.
All right.
I saw something in the record questioning about Douglas being in the political subdivision.
I think that's a different issue, right?
I think that one of the emails has a reference to another subject.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's...
I think it was a pole, actually.
Perhaps there is a cool foot.
Susan is not here, the agenda is totally irrelevant. Yeah, that's totally different.
Earlier thing, yeah. I think it's a different matter. I was intrigued by it, too.
Yeah.
Is part of Douglas looking to secede from our...
I guess we could do that in my report.
All right.
We'll address your curiosity.
All right.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a motion on the pole itself?
A move that we accept the poll petition as presented.
Second?
Motion again has been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right. So, we are now up to Conservation Commission appointment, Montini? Did I butcher your last name or did I get it right?
Good job, actually.
All right, good. I'd apologize in advance.
No, that's okay. Arthur Montini, 60, West Street, Douglas.
Excellent. All right. You're looking for a seat on conservation and also looking to get onto the personnel board?
Well, no, I thought it was like a second choice type thing. When's enough? I just retired, and I was, my job required me to be on the road all the time, so I wasn't active in anything in the town so much. We've been living in the town. We built a house on Mumford Street in 2002, and my wife decided that wasn't the forever house after all. So, we just built a new house on West Street, and now I'm retired, so I wanted, I don't have any expertise in this field or anything. I'm an outdoorsman, camper, hunting, and things like that, but the builder I was using, Dan Heaney, was on some of the committees in town in the past. I don't know if he still is, but he said, "Oh, there's a good way to spend some of your time, give something back to the town." So, got some common sense and...
You're excluded now.
Education. So, I'm not leading a coup or anything. So, I sat in on one of the meetings. Looked like there were some folks short, they barely got a quorum, I guess. So, maybe this is a good opportunity to help fill the ranks out a little bit, that's all.
I think it is.
You're not going to go and like stalk people's properties and go crazy or anything, are you?
I'm not like that.
All right. I'm just checking. You can never be too sure.
Like I said, I don't have any background in conservation per se. I mean, I know, you know, they're there to protect the wetlands and things like that, and I spoke for, with the conservation agent for a little bit, and he said most of it's common sense, and he could help guide us through that process, so.
And you pick it up over the course of a decade or so, you know, the committee, you'll be...
How long?
Hughes has been on the Board of Selectmen for like 36 years.
36 years? I don't know about that long, but we'll see.
No, I think it's great, and congratulations on your retirement.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's nice to see somebody volunteering for one of these. If you have friends that are looking at like FinCom, and there's like all kinds of stuff.
All kinds of stuff, huh?
Yeah. So, we're always looking for people to help out, but, yeah.
Make a motion that we accept the nomination or the application of Arthur Montini?
Second.
It was quick. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Suzanne's going to...
Thank you.
Suzanne's going to get us with the term.
Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah. For a term ending?
Never.
I think Suzanne tells you to stop by the town clerk at some point before your first meeting.
Should be sworn in.
Should be sworn in.
Oh, okay. I'll pick her up.
Get your decoder ring, all that good stuff.
Yeah. Green Lantern. Some waders.
Don't forget the initiation ceremony either.
You weren't supposed to tell them about that.
We have that in Boroughville, don't we?
All right, so we have the Douglas Axeman Soccer requesting for a sign at the VFW property.
Evening, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Dave Vassar, A.D. Gilboa Street. So, I'm currently treasurer of the Douglas Axeman Soccer Club, and with all of the work that we've been doing up at the VFW, part of it is obviously the beautification and identification. Right now, we have a beautiful banner up there that one of us has to go into the woods weekly and dig out and it rehang. So, on the front, you'll see a photo of the NEFC, so it's New England Football Club, out of Mendon. That's what they have at the entrance of their park. We want to do something similar. The maximum size would be three feet tall by five feet wide, most likely three by three. On the back is basically what we want to do, basically for identification of the field because it is set back. We've had a lot of complaints from parents coming in from other towns that they can't find it.
Right.
And we tell them, "Look for the red schoolhouse," and they drive right by it and "Look for a real red schoolhouse." So, in the spirit of the VFW field, what we would do is on the, it would be a two-part sign. If we ever get Martin Road going, we would want to put one up on Martin Road. So, the top would be the same, the bottom would be another panel that says VFW Field with the flag in the background to honor the veterans, very similar to what you see on the NEFC. Same company, we would do vinyl so that it lasts, we don't have to repaint it and everything.
So, you guys just do four-by-fours on the ground?
Yeah. Four-by-four, and then they slide the vinyl over it and tie it together.
I have no issues.
I agree.
I like that there's a flag in the background.
It looks good.
Congratulations on all your, your work with the youth of Douglas.
Any thoughts, Matt?
I think it's a great idea. It's kind of hard to find a field.
What, do I need to taunt you a second time?
No.
All right, then.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the sign as presented.
Second?
Are there any fees associated with this, signage fees?
There might be a $10 permit fee.
In the interest of the youth of Douglas, I'll support your motion if you waive the $10 permit fee.
Sorry to have been made in seconded too late, dude.
All right.
I'm just kidding.
Want your board to recognize he cost $10.
I will amend my, my motion to include waiving of the $10 fee.
I will second the waived, amended motion.
Giving away the farm, Paul.
It's for the children.
It's all right. It's all good. It's a good cause.
It's for the children.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Dave. And if your guys want to come and get on TV real quick, I noticed they've been...
Oh, they were on.
Yeah.
They were? Any of you guys want to come up and be chairman? You can just take the meeting over from here, or...
We have a position on the Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, go sit over there and talk about baseball.
There you go.
There you go. Wave. That's it.
Mr. Bonin, do you, do you coach any of these kids?
They are a little young for me, but I have seen them on the field and coached their older brother. This has turned out to be very serviceable as a...
He was a little too shy, isn't he?
Yes. Very good. We'll see you guys.
Take care.
Our next item, near and dear to your heart, Tim. The downtown solar-powered crosswalk sign location update, as I affectionately refer to it as Bonin's blinkers.
Chief?
Good evening.
How are you, chief?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I've got a couple of things for you to look at, you can pass them around. Basically, a couple of different options. I spoke with John, and I think in the past, we've had, what you'll see on there is, on the first page, we've had the ones that you can, they're like the movable signs, you can stick in the middle of the road at the crosswalks, which will alert you that the crosswalk is coming up. The other ones you'll see on the back of that page, they have the poles that are very similar to light poles that you could put at the crosswalks. They're solar-powered, they actually have flashing yellow lights. But I think if you see them, they're almost like streetlights, and they're definitely going to change the landscape and the cosmetics of the downtown area as you could, depending on where you put them. I mean, you'll definitely know that there's a crosswalk there, but you'll see those lights flashing. I just saw a couple the other day, I happened to be in Worcester, and they, where they have them, UMass Hospital on Belmont Street. I mean, I know you really can't compare the streets, but they have the flashing yellow lights that are at the crosswalk on each side of each pole, and you can see it when you're coming from the top of the hill. I mean, it's very visible, but like I said, it's certainly something for you to consider as, I don't know how it's going to look once it's up, and, you know, I think it's going to be a big change. They're pretty expensive, you're looking at probably between, depending, you know, there's a couple of different options on there, but you're starting around $1,800, and they could go anywhere up to $35 to $4, depending on what you get for options on them. Those are the ones you like. The ones that you put in the crosswalks at the center of the road, you can get those that also have some lighting that are highly reflective, and depending on where you shop around for those, you're looking at like $250, between $250 and $400 apiece. They're pretty durable, pretty rugged. We haven't had one out there in a while, and they have to be because I'll be completely honest with you, I mean, sometimes you'll find them on the side of the road in early morning hours.
Exactly. Big couple of luck.
Yeah, whether it's accidental or intentional in some cases, but we've, you know, we've had them before, and some, we've actually, you know, the overnight guys, we would keep them in the road during the busy hours, and then, you know, overnight, maybe move them off to the, off to the side.
Yeah.
You know, like in front of the, put it in front of the library, and, you know, then the overnight guy would go back, you know, in the morning. But as far as, you know, I think you can see, we have the speed trailer downtown on eastbound side right now, next week we'll have it on westbound side. We've been increasing patrols downtown, trying to slow the cars going down, going through the center of town, but you just, you can't be out there 24/7. I mean, we'll, you'll slow them down. We're doing what we want to do, you know, get the word out there that we're sitting down there, and we're trying to focus on the downtown area, but you just can't be there 24/7, and as soon as you leave, all it takes is that, you know, one draglet will come through at a high rate of speed. And it's, the people that are crossing the street in the crosswalk during the busy times, it's difficult to see with the way that the cars are parked. So, I mean, I would leave the decision, like John and I have talked about it, and we reviewed those things, I mean, he could install them, but I think what you have to consider is the landscape, how it's changed, the downtown, and, you know, financially, how many you would want to purchase, if anything. My, you know, I would, might suggest trying a couple of those ones that we can, the portable ones that we can put out there and see if that has any impact first before we make the big move of doing the permanent solar ones would be, you know, my suggestion, but I'd be open to whatever you guys.
Did they have an impact in the past, do you think?
You know, it was probably about six or seven years ago when we, when we got a couple of them, and then we put them out there, and then it probably, I would say it does because, I mean, clearly you see it in the middle of the road, and when you come down, it's going to, you know, force you to probably slow down a little bit. But it's the thing when people are in the crosswalks waiting, waiting to cross, I mean, that's usually the problem. I mean, you're talking about Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, late evening, when the traffic is busy downtown, people downtown, but you have people even coming every morning, eastbound, that will stop, or westbound, and they'll want to stop and go to the Coffee Bean or something. So, they're parked on the other side of the street, and they're trying to get across the street. And the traffic is so steady, if you don't get somebody who's going to stop and let you go. And I've actually seen people attempt to stop or think about stopping for somebody in the crosswalk when you're down there watching, and what they'll do is they'll look up in their rearview mirror to see if they're going to have time to stop for the person in the crosswalk. It's great if they're paying attention, but if the person behind them is not paying attention, they're getting hit from behind, and then the person who starts walking is, has the potential to get struck. So, you see one car slowing down, getting ready to stop, then you'll see them look and say, "Oh, this car behind me is not paying attention," so, you know, they'll keep going.
And then sometimes wake up as a park, you don't actually see the person until the last second.
You're right.
And then it's not safe to stop.
Right.
Without getting rear-ended.
I see that more often than not.
Yeah.
Those are $250 bucks?
Yeah, you'd have to shop around, but the ones on that page, you can probably get them between $250 and $350, depending on where you go. Some are a little sturdier and better than, than the others, but...
It's not the lights that you're looking for, but it's a good idea to put your toe in the water first.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think it'd be good to try something like this.
I would say, having really looked at the landscape, as the chief was saying, it's, it'd be tricky to get what I had envisioned. Yeah, and I don't know if, there's some there that are a little small, like on that packet there, if you go on the last page, there, those are actually kind of big, but there's another paper floating around with some smaller ones that might just be like on a, you know, a one-way sign pole with one small yellow light instead of the two beacons on each side flashing. I mean, there's, there's some different versions out there that are a little cheaper and a little smaller. But either way, I think coming in or coming out, if you set them up on the crosswalks, you're going to, you're certainly going to see a constant flashing, especially at night.
Because I think half the battle is, is getting people to realize that there's a crosswalk there. Even like in the spring, you don't really, like, you haven't gotten out and done the painting yet, so it's really not a bright yellow yet, so those would be helpful. It helps knowing that the crosswalk's there, and hopefully people will be aware that there's people that potentially are coming out between cars to cross the road.
And I can look into that, and, you know, I can talk with John about getting the signs. I may have some money that I can get, I can get a couple of the signs out of one of my accounts, and even through our traffic grant. We did a governor highway safety grant, so we had some money for some equipment there. But, I mean, my suggestion would be to start with that again first, see if we get anywhere with that, and if not, look to the other lighting situations.
Works for me.
I would agree.
Any other questions on the town?
No, I'm good.
Now, you're good?
Yep.
Mike? Chief, thank you very much. I appreciate the work.
All right, yeah, I'll research that, and I'll see if I can get some solid numbers, and then I'll let you know what we need to do to move forward, but I'll move on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
That's you.
All right.
Dave, we don't want Main Street to look like Las Vegas.
Maybe.
What happens in Douglas stays in Douglas.
What's that?
What happens in Douglas stays there.
Unless you're on Facebook.
All right, so ambulance receipts policy first reading? Is this posted up on the website, Matt? Or do I need to actually go down and read the whole thing?
Well, I think she posted it, but if she didn't, she will.
You don't want to read that one?
You don't want to read all of this?
Definitely not.
No. So, this will be, if it's not currently, will be posted up on the town website for review?
So, just a brief introduction to what it is. We currently don't have a write-off policy, and in the absence of a policy, we don't charge anything off. So, we carry a fairly large sum of money year to year for uncollected receivables for ambulance services. In some cases, the people have been deceased for years, and we'd like to have a policy in place so when the auditors check the paper trail, they can see that we follow the policy and that we were able to properly charge down the account because there are just, there are quite a few receipts that are uncollectible. We do a fairly aggressive job through a third-party pillar, trying to collect.
So, we're not trying to do that?
Yeah, we don't let it, we don't let it get stale. But you do have to realize that, of course, there are people who are transported who are very sick or who don't make it, so it's not the easiest thing to be right there seven days later. So, we let it go for a while, but they do, there are phone calls and letters that they get made. Just part of the, part of the business of running a town is that you have to be able to collect your receivables. So, this was put together by Chief Vincent and by Gene, neither of whom are in town tonight, they're both away. The chief is out, is not here tonight, he's traveling later this week, but he's not at the meeting, and Gene is out of town. But I think it's fairly straightforward stuff, it's planned to, the turning point is 120 days, that's pretty much, and once it gets a whole lot older than that, we probably won't see it.
Good. Any questions?
No. Being a first reading, we got a couple more bites at that apple, we're good.
Okay. So, we're on to signing the pilot's approved at town meeting for both Douglas Renewables LLC and AST Wallem Mass Solar.
So, a mountain of people for you to sign.
I see that.
Because I believe they're both pilots will be signed in triple kit. I think this is the poll petition. And each one of these packages is one of the pilot agreements.
Thank you, mate.
Well, that's going around.
The aggregate receipts for the pilots, and we're on 100 and...
Well, we'll get you the exact number when they finish, and they, we do the inventory. I believe we were at the 80s for one and the high 30s for the other. So, conservatively, let's call it 110,000.
Beautiful. So, those are going around. First look at annual appointments. Suzanne, as usual, highlighted who's up.
Can we three leave?
Yes.
Yeah.
I see both you, Kevin, and Tim are up on the Central Mass Regional Planning rep, and he's the one who would be considered to be reappointed.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate selectmen on the wonderful work he's been doing.
And I think it would be a shame for him to step back. In fact, I think he would be better suited as a full member as opposed to an alternative.
Well, I am the full member.
He is, yeah. Mr. Morse is the ultimate, right?
Well, I think you should continue in that role.
I agree.
I can't believe you're doing that to me.
It just happened.
It did?
It did. Like brutally happened right there.
Well, I will tell you that...
You've enjoyed your experience immensely.
It has been, it hasn't even been a learning experience, I don't know what it's been.
What have the highlights been of those meetings?
A beautiful location, in which I believe we meet at the Union Station, if I'm...
Despite the renovation that's going on, they're still having their meetings, right?
Yeah.
What's this?
What's that?
Central Mass Regional Planning.
Yeah, they're across the street.
They move?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm, I would just straight up tell the people that I've pulled my best, but I think town could be better served. Can we point someone to that?
Outside of the board?
Yeah.
I don't see why we couldn't.
Is that you?
There's no, is there any mandate that says it has to be someone from the Board of Selectmen?
Don't look at me, I would not know.
So could it be like?
I go there for a lot of meetings.
Oh, you do?
I'm where the town is represented in their various.
You'll work through Matt and put it on your resume? All right.
Well, I, I see an opportunity to kill two birds with one stone here.
Why don't we take somebody from EDC and put them on it?
Well, allow me to finish my thought.
Finish your thought.
Mr. Wojcik is attending those meetings anyway and we can appoint outside the board. Would it be appropriate or possible to appoint Mr. Wojcik as the representative?
We could.
We could certainly look into, I wonder if residency is.
That was the first question why I asked our August chairman.
We should look into that.
All right, so we need to find out.
Multiple voices at the.
I really think you have to be an elected official to serve here.
So EDC doesn't cut it either.
Yeah, because it's Planning Board and Board of Selectmen, so.
As we are stuck, Bonner.
Could ask the planning board.
We have, this is the first look.
Yeah, we'll look at this later.
Let me work my magic and see what.
After looking into it, that's not a possibility, I'm sure you will be agreeable to continuing in your.
I'm not agreeable to it, that's what I'm trying to tell you, but that's fine.
He's not only painting you into a corner, he's using a broad brush into it.
Oh, he's feisty today.
So, don't miss any of the next two meetings.
In the Civil War, if you get a, if you paid $500, you wouldn't have to be drafted in the Civil War, or you could find a replacement, so maybe that's.
$500 for the price of that? We'll work that out.
All right, so we're gonna come back to that. We're on to approving the minutes. I'm calling a mercy rule on Tim.
So I'll move that we approve the minutes for the March 26, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll also move that we approve the minutes for the April 16, 2019 meeting. Is it you who's chairman or Matt? Who's signing for Douglas on these? Are you signing them?
Could you please just all sign it?
Oh.
Regardless of whether there's lines or not.
Okay. Go for it, my friend. I'm still waiting for a second on the second set of minutes.
I was absent on that day.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
You abstain.
I abstain.
Just to be difficult. Let's see how you are. Mr. Administrator, what do you got for us?
Well, you have another set, I think.
Yeah.
I just have approved minutes.
No, you have the May 16.
May 6.
And then we also have some executive session minutes as well.
There were since Suzanne. Okay.
So I made a motion that we approve the May 6, 2019.
Second.
Do we want to throw a motion in there, including the executive session?
It's a different date, so I don't want to confuse the issue.
It's the same date, but you need to second it.
No, it's a separate date. It's back to April 16.
May 6.
Right, but the executive session minutes is April 16.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve, actually, do we have to retain? I imagine we will. Why don't we do this? I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of May 6, retaining all?
It's April 16.
We just did that one.
Did we do the executive session?
Thanks, my friend.
Motion's here for you.
I know.
May 6 was the regular, the 16th is the executive session, correct?
Can always count on you, Hal. Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Another abstaining, just to be difficult.
You were there.
Not on April 16.
Oh, we did May 6.
Just a May 6, I will, I will remove my abstention and vote aye.
All right then.
I thought we were doing April 16.
That helps us all.
Exactly.
Anything else on minutes? No? Mr. Administrator, what do you have for us?
So by way of follow-up from your last special meeting last week, we've had a very nice running dialogue with the Department of Conservation and Recreation and we are making progress on the various items that were discussed that evening. That includes ongoing dialogue between the local fire chief, Chief Vincent, and their fire station and their coordinator here to review the situation in the forest and various other items around appropriate contact persons for different issues. There've been emails back and forth, phone calls back and forth, so we seem to be moving along in the way the board would have hoped. So hopefully we'll have some results to show for that in the near future. This week, you may all recall that John Furno was named Coach of the Year. The ceremony was this week for his Girl Softball efforts. So congratulations to one of our department heads for his excellent service in sports. A reminder as well, I think everybody knows that this is Memorial Day weekend coming up and there is a local parade. And you're all welcome to join the.
Festivities?
The solemn part of the day, which is visiting the various cemeteries around town and then the parade there. And if you haven't received the itinerary, we can resend it to you. Make sure Suzanne says that. One of the things that has taken up a lot of our time, I put together a team of the two public safety chiefs, the superintendent of water and sewer, a couple of the communications gurus from the police department, it'll be Brandon and Mark, and also working with John Coyne from fire, all working together on the public safety radio system procurement, which was approved by town meeting. It's a complicated project. There's a lot that goes into this and there were some difficulties the last time the town went through this. Really, the projected results of the coverage didn't pan out in real life, in reality. And so there were, there are some errors that are not worth repeating, to use a pun, that we, we really, with the, with the budget that we asked for, we're gonna stick within and try to get something back to the people for it, but radio technology continues to evolve. There's a lot of traffic. It's the same amount of frequency that the creator made from the beginning of time and there's a lot more people trying to use it. So narrowbanding and a whole bunch of other things have occurred to try to get more traffic out there. We just have to, our technology has to keep up and our interoperability right now, we're in a pretty dismal situation. With interoperability, we have lots of extra equipment bouncing signals around in between each other. And the idea is we want to get away from all of that and streamline and use the proven high-band VHF communications. And we would have the appropriate technology to, of course, monitor and participate in state police at the 800 megahertz level. Rhode Island uses it as well.
Right.
But we also have to be able to hear each other, so I'm optimistic we'll stick to the budget, but we're also probably going to be looking to do some things a little bit differently and that includes maybe boosting the signal with some directional antennas from different angles to get better coverage for the town. Because we still do have significant dead spots that, depending on weather conditions, where the leaves are on the trees and where people are relative to the closest mobile repeater, you know, it's less than ideal and it certainly is not cost-effective. If we had to replace everything we have today, it would actually cost more than moving the system to a, both an interoperable and redundant system, so.
A question. Have we looked at piggybacking or joining onto the state 800 system? I know there are some communities, Marlboro comes to mind, that have done that. And the cost savings, I mean, you have to buy all the equipment, which is staggering at this point, but the cost savings there is they maintain the system. And we have more or less just tenants on their system. Has that been looked at at all?
It hasn't come up with the group, I mean, what, we had more discussion today, so today was our second meeting. We're still trying to get the inventory, like nailed down, as to what we have now and how it works. The, every single communication station in the Commonwealth has access or has 800 megahertz through LPS 7 or whatever it's called. And so station-to-station communication over that is possible and station-to-state police conversation is possible. So the question is, are we gonna have mobiles and portables that also pick up that band? Ideally, we would. We have, we were talking about that today, just strategically, when an incident occurs in this town, we want our chiefs to be the incident commanders for as long as possible and not get kicked out of that role because our comms don't work. It would be an awful reason not to have local control. You're correct, it is expensive. Because we have coverage issues in town, the higher you, the higher you go up the frequency, the more difficult.
Low angle and range.
So that is a primary concern and that's why we're talking about boosting the signal, because right now we're kind of like an umbrella. We've got that one stick up on top of the water tower and we're trying to get almost all of our coverage from that and that's where the rain rolls off the end of the umbrella and that's what we're not getting is out there. That umbrella gets pretty small when you go to UHF and smaller still when you go to 800. There are benefits to having almost everybody on 800. We do have mutual aid relationships with Rhode Island, which is all 800.
Right.
And so that all has to be taken into consideration. It's frightening, you know, it was one of the big lessons of 9/11 and the station nightclub fire in Rhode Island is that interoperability is a huge issue with radio systems. And here we are, 16, 18 years later.
Right.
And we're still not there yet. So even the bigger communities are still not there yet.
Are there dead zones in the state forest?
So, so to add to our list of demands with DCR, one of the things we've talked about today was having the appropriate equipment down at the bottom and shooting that line of communication back up to the top of the hill. Because from the top of the hill, we can reach back up to our, to the cell site on the water tower. It does, there is a, that, that link can be made. We lose it when we go all the way downhill through the forest. So that's not a lot of money.
We ask.
Don't really need a voting station there, you just need a repair.
Ask them to send help on that, financial help?
Sure, and we also have that, that account that we have. Because we're talking, we're not talking a zillion dollars.
Pick up a few more dollars from the state.
Yeah, well, it would benefit them too.
Yeah.
That, exactly, yes.
You mentioned the trust fund. I just got word from the senator that the town will see a $2 increase in out-of-state daily fees.
Vehicles.
So, that's in the budget. He wouldn't have probably said that to me if it wasn't looking good, so there's additional.
So is it just the fee or do we get the $2 for out-of-state?
It's to the town.
Okay.
So we expect to get a $2 increase for every out-of-state vehicle there?
That's my understanding.
Excellent.
That's just quite a bit of money, actually.
It is.
Yeah.
Because we're at 5 now, right?
Well, I don't think we are. I think we're still at a dollar.
I believe we're still at a dollar.
Yeah, I think so too.
We were promised that it would go up to 5. I think what you're being told is we're gonna go up to 3.
Yeah.
That's still a huge improvement. I mean, it's obviously a lot more money.
Three times better.
Right.
Yeah. As long as we can access it, as we know.
Has there been any traction on any of the other punch list items that they had? Ridge Trail and the tree and?
So Ridge Trail, I think I'm, I'm still trading phone calls with the commissioner on that.
Okay.
What we tried to finalize this week was a lot of the fire, the discussion on fire safety. And so you asked earlier, why is that random email about the? So it's kind of related. We've, we've talked for some time about the town having its own small drone to assist with search and rescue efforts in the forest and for other purposes, you know, damage assessment and other things. And we had one of our enterprising police officers go through the entire rigmarole of becoming an FAA licensed pilot, which is what you have to do to fly a drone. And there is a process, a federal process. Well, the federal government is confused about Douglas because we have a post office and a census, a census tract known as East Douglas. And you'll see it, if you've ever tried to do statistical research on Douglas, you get this weird remnant that they can't get out of their heads. So they were looking for proof that the town of Douglas is a town, which seems like the most absurd thing to have to prove to anybody. It's also a lack of it. So because nobody would ever ask for it, it doesn't exist anywhere. When the Secretary of State and their office was kind enough to write us a letter and that wasn't good enough for the feds. The state of Massachusetts saying the town of Douglas is a town wasn't good enough for them. So we're looking for historical records or other clear references to the entire township and not just East Douglas.
Do they have a map?
It's silly. I know.
It's awesome. I want that job.
I sincerely hope we're right and they're wrong or we've all been governing nothing for.
Unincorporated territory. I think at this, we could say that it was annexed.
About some other federal programs, if they won't accept the states where it's like Department of Agriculture is.
Grants, right.
Grants.
That could really be, actually go in the wrong direction because when we certify for, for instance, water infrastructure.
Right.
We're only certifying those portions that qualify as rural, so you may not be getting the entire town. You're only getting the surface area. It's, it's, yeah, so we'd be better off.
Maybe some other federal program has us listed as a town.
I'm sure.
The last thing in the world you want is federal agencies talking to each other.
But that's, it's a, it's trivial pursuit, but it.
Lots of good men have died that way.
Does the library have it?
So we've been working, there is a historical collection in the library.
Yeah.
We're trying to pin down. It's clearly not the very earliest priority we have, so. The comms project is probably taking up the vast majority of my time right now. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Do we have any old business? Seeing as none, any new business? Again, seeing as none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Served.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.